Good morning, everyone. Today is Monday, July 7, 2025. Hope everybody had a great Independence Day weekend. We're here this morning for a work session, and our discussion item is Performance Measures for Public Records and Information. I'm Kristin Stevens, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. With me are my fellow commissioners, Commissioner John Kavales, Commissioner Jody Shadak McNally. We also have our county manager with us, and we have a wide variety of folks in the audience. And I will turn things over to Julie Elsor from the Department of Performance Budget and Strategy. But first, I wanted to acknowledge there's a couple elected officials in the room. We have Tina Harris, our county clerk and recorder, and we have Bob Overbeck, our county assessor, with us this morning. So welcome, everyone, and their teams and folks from other departments. So wanted to say welcome to everyone. And Julie, I'll turn things over to you.
Thanks. Julie Elsor, the Data Program Manager. And today is the first of our annual series of performance measures presentations. You remember, these are grouped by service area. So today, we're doing public records and information. This year, we have them scheduled to coincide with budget season. So you'll be seeing these five presentations spaced out over the next couple months, so kind of all right in a row. And you'll also remember that part of our strategic plan is to create some new KPIs and performance measures. I'm the objective team lead for that. And my team is working on redoing the whole thing. And I've met with these folks and talked with them about it. We're not quite ready to implement that plan this year. So this year, it's going to look familiar. You'll see them presented the way that you've seen them in the past. And then hopefully, next year, we'll have something new to show you. So today is Public Records and Information. We have three offices here to present, but we have six slides. So we're going to aim for just under 10 minutes per slide. And we're going to mix things up a little bit. And we're going to start with the clerk and recorder. So if you're ready, go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Tina Harris. I'm the Laramie County Clerk and Recorder. And I am so pleased to be here this morning. Before I start, I really want to thank Julie and the Budget Office for the continuous support that they provide our office. They're either on the other side of an email or the phone. And really, they make our jobs a lot easier by always being available. And I will say that that's what makes working for Laramie County or representing Laramie County so great, is that we are so collaborative and supportive of one another. So I want to start out by, I want to make sure we're on the motor vehicle part of it. You know, the things that we do, we continue to meet residents where they're at, whether it's in person, by phone, or online. And our services are evolving. But our core values remain, and those are accessibility, trust, and efficiency. So the data we're sharing today really reflects the scale of what we do and the ways that we continue to improve how we do it. So for vehicle licensing, this year, or in 2024, we actually processed 410,554 transactions. And so that is holding steady with 2023. In-person visits jumped to 155,400. So, and that is after reopening to walk-ins in late 2023. This is not a new service. We've always offered that, but we reopened it from appointment-based to walk-ins. And now, it's just more accessible and efficient for the community. Our wait times, we reduced them from 15 minutes to just over nine minutes, which is, to me, a success story. This wasn't due to fewer customers. It came from process improvement, smarter staffing, and better tools that we have implemented. Our phone support, our call volume, really, our call volume dropped from 106,000 calls in 2020. And that's because, you know, priorities have shifted to under 70,000 in 2024. And the hold times went from 15 minutes to 2 minutes and 20 seconds. And that's thanks to our callback feature and system upgrades. So what we're seeing is just a transition. We're actually starting to see post-COVID, or pre-COVID, numbers now. So our online and kiosk services, we have, our online transactions grew to 178,000, which is a 14% increase from 2020. Kiosks processed nearly 38,000 transactions in 2024. So that is something that's quick, that's reliable, and popular with the community. And these are the kiosks that are in our King Supers throughout the county. So bottom line, residents can choose what works best for them. And we're here to serve them in every format. Okay, that is it for vehicle licensing?
Any questions on vehicles?
Yeah, oh, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Kavales.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. Regarding the wait and hold times in the lobby in person as well as phone call hold times, I think, Tina, you mentioned innovation with staffing and some technology. Could you say a little bit more about that, please?
Sure. So we have a great team on our, so we've looked at our processes and how we can improve those processes. One of the things when we say smarter staffing, we put our aces in places. So when it comes to, if we're backlogged on mail, and really, that's where it's at, because we get a lot of mail from dealerships. We get a lot of mail from lenders. And so when they send that in, and we have overwhelming, we try to keep maybe two to three days backlog. If it gets further than that, then we really focus on getting that mail done so that we don't have the longer wait times. We don't have more phone calls to supplement getting a new temporary or something like that. So we want to have all that paperwork, all those transactions completed, so that folks have the opportunity to either use the online service, phone call, or if they want to come in and see us, which it sounds like they like to do, then we're ready to serve them.
In terms of technology deployed, any, I thought you mentioned that, I don't know if you're referring to the kiosks or the options that folks have for remote or?
Yeah, it's just the options that they have for remote, really enhancing. So a lot of the transactions, we continue to add more transactions that can be completed by phone. And so that gives people opportunity, instead of coming in and waiting for, waiting in line, they can do it over the phone. A lot of the technology would be the phone system. That's where we implemented the most. This allows people that callback feature. And it also allows for routing, better routing, to different departments.
Great. I'm looking forward to testing your processes as I need to renew my vehicle registration. I believe it's this month, but I think we still have a month grace period.
Yes.
Commissioner Shadak McNally.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Good morning, Tina. Thanks for being here today. I'm curious about, I know sometimes when people have some unusual circumstances, you've asked us to have them send them to you, which we've been doing.
Yes.
Is it still kind of, folks who are still getting used to that you can't just walk in and you have to have an appointment? I think there's maybe still some folks who just think they're going to walk in and get in line when they get a new registration or new car. And still, some of those folks who are surprised that they can't just walk up. Is there, how has that changed over the last year? Are folks who just show up that maybe aren't realizing there's a system in place? How are we adjusting and accommodating those folks so, you know, they've come here in person and realized there was needed appointment or something? I'm assuming there is a system, but I'm just curious. How does that, and what does that look like?
Sure. So we do allow folks just to walk in. If they have an extenuating circumstance, something new, maybe they purchased a vehicle over the weekend and they need a temporary, they can walk into our office. We have a kiosk that they could just take a number. Their wait might be a little bit longer than someone who chooses to make an appointment. So we have this hybrid, so they could do either or. So those systems are in place. And, you know, if there are situations that require even deeper look into it, we have staff on hand that can help them or assist them right away.
Thank you.
All right. We're on track right now, so move on to the next.
Okay. All right. So for recording marriage licenses and passports, you know, this is something new that we added last year. We started highlighting the services and the data in our recording department. And so document volume has stabilized. So we've recorded 56,470 documents in 2024. If you look in 2020, you see that there was, 2020, 2021, there was a record-high recording. And then you start seeing that trend go down in 2022, 2023. Well, we're starting to see it go back up now. And that is aligned with the market trends. For marriage license and civil union license, we are strong and steady. Folks are still wanting to get married, which I think is fabulous. I know. So we issued over 3,800 licenses. And so we love to celebrate them when they come into our office. Last year, we hosted a license-to-wed bash on a Saturday, which was a huge success. And so we had a great time celebrating with those couples. And passports, passport services, it's a standout success. I mean, we have really, you know, there's not a lot of opportunities or a lot of facilities that assist with passport applications or accepts passport applications. So from 889 applications in 2020, we went from 889 applications in 2020 to over 6,300 applications last year in 2024. Same with passport photo services. We're a one-stop shop. So we took over 6,200 photos in 2024. So it's a huge growth in capacity and demand. And we are very excited to provide that service to the community.
Great. Questions? Please go ahead.
Thank you. Just a quick comment, positive comment. And that is, I appreciate your responsiveness and that of Elizabeth when there was an inquiry from the community regarding passports and whether or not we could deploy some of our staff and equipment off-site. So I'm grateful for that responsiveness. And I think that the folks inquiring followed up with Elizabeth and sure they got the information and whatever support we could give to help navigate some of these current times.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, Commissioner Shadak McNally? Yeah, no, I think these are great services, and it's amazing. Have you had staff up to be able to meet that demand for the passports? Because I know there is, there's also some financial gain that you're bringing in dollars with the passport services that you provide.
Yes. So we have not had to add additional staff. What we do is we staff two desks instead of one, and that's by appointment only. However, if someone came in and they had an emergency situation, we would bring somebody in to help them, to assist them. But we do have two folks that, that's their responsibility is to be there, available to assist individuals who have an appointment, to accept their passports. So, but then we have two other desks that do the recording, the marriage licenses. So we were able to improve our processes. Again, this is where we looked at processes and thought, how can we better enhance those to accommodate these?
Right. Thank you.
And, oh, well, the other thing is, we also host Passport Saturdays, too. So this has helped. We had, in 2024, we hosted two Passport Saturdays. And so a lot of these numbers right here are, you know, I think they have increased the number of acceptances that we've had because of those events.
Did you have another question? Go ahead.
Will you be doing a Saturday wedding bash event this year?
We will.
When?
We probably, I think we're going to shoot for fall because there's an increase in the number of licenses that we issue in the fall.
Thanks.
That's interesting. You always think about summer weddings, so.
Yeah. Rocky Mountain National Park.
Oh, very true. Okay. Well, we'll look forward to that. And please let us know when that happens.
Absolutely.
All right. I think we're ready to move on to your next slide.
Okay. Elections. So, elections, this is another, this is another data point that we've added to our slides because we know that this is important information. So we're going to, right now, I'm going to focus on the November 2024 general election. So for that election, our active eligible voters, we had 274, 747,000 active eligible voters, which is up 5% from the last election. Turnout for this election, for the 2024 general election, was 83.73%, which is among the highest in the state overall. The state, their voter turnout overall for the state of Colorado was 79.85%. So mail ballots returned was 214,968. So I want us to think about that pretty closely, or think about that for a second because we had a two-card ballot. It was doubled. So our accounting facility, our new central count facility, really helped us get through that election. In-person ballots cast were 17,343. That's where folks visited our voter service and polling centers to cast their ballot. Voter access and statutory compliance, and that's going to be for the voter service and polling centers and then the 24-hour drop boxes. So for the general elections, Laramie is required to have 20 VSPCs. And we met that exactly per statute. For coordinated elections, though, statute requires VSPCs equal to the number of motor vehicle offices, which is only three. But we exceeded that. We always have more than what we're supposed to because we want people to have access. We want voting to be accessible. Drop boxes, based on our voter, our active eligible voters, the state requires us to have 23 drop boxes. We currently have 24 in Laramie County. So we want to ensure that access across the county. Some important context about election data. This data only reflects November elections that you see up here. So it's either the general or the coordinated, which are odd-year elections. Fluctuations in turnout are normal and reflect voter interest in specific contests, not the performance of the elections team. So I think that's important to recognize. And the direct comparisons year to year don't really tell that whole story. So behind the charts is a full-time team, right? Elections team that does a lot of great work. So, you know, they're responsible for testing equipment. They're responsible for reviewing our processes for improvement. They're responsible for maintaining voter rolls, conducting audits, training judges before an election cycle, managing legislative compliance, which we all know that changes fast and often. And, you know, they're really, we're starting to really get out there, and we're leading outreach and education because that is very important to me. And so whether there's 10,000 voters or 210,000 voters who participate in elections, our team is busy all year round.
Commissioner Shadak McNally has a question.
Yeah, I'm trying to, thank you. Madam Clerk and Recorder, I'm curious. Maybe you can help me expand on this a little bit and maybe help deepen my understanding. When I look at, you know, the off-cycle, off-general elections, our turnout really turns down.
Yes.
I see that we still have about the same amount of drop boxes, but the same voting center and polling centers. I mean, I know we're not having, maybe it's only the municipalities are having the election or the voting centers. Can you explain to me where those six voting centers or polling centers are at in 2021 and 2023? Are those across the county or rolling where the elections are happening? I'm just wondering if that limits participation by having, just going down from 20 to six.
Well, so in the coordinated elections, or the, yeah, the coordinated, which are our off-year, as you can see, voter turnout is not. And we are only required in Laramie County to have three VSPCs. So we go from six to eight depending on the election. So usually, we run about eight. And so those are going to be scattered throughout the county, whether it's in Estes Park, Loveland, Berthoud. We will have three in Fort Collins. We would have one in Wellington, potentially one in Temeth. So we do scatter them out throughout the counties, or throughout the county. It's not just all clumped together.
Okay, great. And I'm assuming the timing or the team has adjusted as well as voting, as some of these elections, that your team kind of ebbs and flows with the volunteer. And I know they're wonderful folks. I talked to some election judges who just love it and are really proud of that work. I'm curious also about, when you talked about the mail-in ballots, and maybe you mentioned this, and I was just absorbed in the data, with the expansion in the two counting, I know you mentioned about the counting, the two pages. Do you feel the expansion in the two machines? It was already needed, but having the two-page ballot made it even more of a need, if that makes sense? And what, we can't say, well, what might have happened? But I imagine if we didn't have the two machines or expansion and adding the two pages, it might have been quite the challenge. I'm wondering about that.
Yeah, absolutely. We would not have, we would have been hard-pressed to meet our statutorily requirements if we did not have that. So by moving into our new account facility and increasing the amount of equipment, having the two geolists there available, we were able to do one pass for signature verification and then the audit pass, right? So it really helped increase that throughput so that we could, because, you know, over 400, it would be 428,000 ballots that we moved through. And that was just for the, I'm just using that as, actually, 420. A lot of ballots, over 400,000 ballots, went through that central count facility. We would have been hard-pressed to meet that statutory dates, or the statutory deadlines.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Kavales, any questions? Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I received the signal that we still have a little bit of time. A couple of questions. Well, first of all, thanks for all the good work, and Michelle and everybody. My first question is, how are we preparing for the first-ever ranked choice voting City of Fort Collins election?
Oh, thank you for that. That's great because that team is doing amazing work. So we have been collaborating with our partners in Boulder County because in 2023, they successfully conducted a ranked voting election. And so at this point, I feel as if we're right on target for preparation. Our system, our equipment has already been updated. We will be hosting a mock election with the City of Fort Collins staff so that we can walk through that process from start to finish, from ballot layout to tabulation to reporting the results. And so from where I'm sitting right now, I feel we're on target. And I feel as if we're going to be really over-prepared for this new voting method. And so we're pretty excited about that.
Great. May I continue?
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Tina. My next two questions, my final two, are related to voter service and polling centers. Regarding the 20 VSPCs in 2024 over the six in the previous year, what is the added cost of having all of those voter service and polling centers? And also, related to that, that's my second question. What is the process that you all use to determine the effectiveness of having all of these centers over? Because I seem to recall discussions that there are some places that are available, but maybe a handful of folks visit them. So cost and your process for determining if all of these need to be open or not?
Yeah. So legislation actually requires that all these be open. So we don't have the ability to pick and choose how many we want to open. So it's really going to be based on the number of registered, active-registered voters. And so in Laramie County, we have three VSPCs that are our stars, right? And that's going to be the Loveland Police and Courts, CSU Campus, and then here at 200 West Oak. The other ones are there for proximity. So people, you know, they don't get as many visitors. But, you know, it's all about the access. And so as far as cost goes, yes, actually, it increases quite a bit. And to have, I don't have specific numbers, but it does increase. And we do get reimbursed by the state for the general election.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. So it seems like there's an increase, for sure, in the number of in-person ballots cast. Does that change anything that you need to do? Do you feel like that's going to continue to trend upward? What's your thoughts on that? Because it was fairly low for a while, and now it's, you know, doubled since, practically doubled since 2020, you know, the 2022 election from 2022 to 2024. Now, granted, that's a presidential, but, I mean, even 2020 to 2024, you know, a marked increase in people voting in person. So what are your thoughts on that?
Well, the data that we're seeing here is very unique, and that's why it doesn't tell the whole story. In 2020, everything was pretty much locked down. We didn't have, people didn't have the ability to go to a VSPC. We had them open, but a lot of people chose not to do that. So that's why you see it lower and you would see a higher mail or drop-off, ballots returned by mail. In 2022, again, that is a general election, but the contest, it's really where the interest is. And so most people, 2024 is unique because there was, people were very interested in that election. And so that's why you had more voter, in-person voter turnout. I think that in this November, the 2025, that's what year we're in, 2025 election, you'll see that those numbers will come down again. But we don't know because, again, we're adding something new to this election process, right? So we have a new voting method, which is ranked voting. So we don't know what that voter behavior is going to look like for this election. So that's going to add another element to the data that we share with you next year.
And then, at one point at the federal level, there was talk about not allowing mail-in ballots in the states. Is there any buzz about that at all, or do you feel like that will continue?
You know, for us, I think that that will continue. But, you know, we're going to be waiting and looking for the Secretary of State to provide us with that direction. And right now, we're just going to continue to do business as normal, as usual. And it would require... And it would require some, you know, changes in legislation for sure. And then it will require some process changes.
Thank you. All right, looks like we can move on.
Okay.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you very much.
And that's, you're done with your portion?
Yes, I'm done.
So wonderful. Well, thank you. Thanks for being here. Thanks for walking us through those.
Madam Chair, can I just ask, Madam Clerk and Recorder, if you could just let us know about the wedding palooza or whatever? I have a recent engagement in my family and maybe that might be helpful to, oh, maybe they want to come get married here. We'll never know.
Okay.
I could tempt them. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Enjoy your day.
Looks like Justine got off easy.
We'll move on to the treasurer's office.
Yeah. Just have you introduce yourself and your title and then
Yes.
ready to roll.
Perfect. So thank you. My name is Todd Sims. I am Chief Deputy Treasurer and Public Trustee here in Larimer County. Irene is unable to be here today, so I'm here on her behalf. I'm also joined in the room by Donna Brady and Vicki Glass, in case there are some questions that I may not be able to answer. So we'll get started. We're going to start off with percent of property taxes collected, which if you look at the graph there on the top left, you'll see the 99.2% collected for last year. That is the amount before the tax lien sale. After the tax lien sale, it's 99.9%. That, part of the reason for some of the lack of collection there was mobile home legislation that was put into place two years ago, which is no longer allowed mobile homes to go to tax lien sale or collect interest until September 1st of this year. So that's the, that's some of that lack of collection there. So there is a little bit of an increase in personal property as well, which is business equipment for, for property, for businesses. We work really hard on those. We go and we visit the business. We, we set up a payment plan. Personal property is very nice because that's the only taxes that we can do a payment plan. So we work with businesses to get those set up. So that's been in place for, for a little while now. Number of tax liens sold on the right-hand side. This number, if you look at past years, this number, this is probably one of the best graphs we have if you look back at history. To come back last year at 956 properties going to sale, that's a huge jump. We consider in our office, anything under 1,000 to be pretty successful year. We obviously would love that to get down into the 200s or so, but, but 956 is still, is still a good number. If you look at the interesting part there where the even year numbers are increased and then it drops for the odd number. So the valuations are done on the odd number year. So the, the next year, it looks like there's an increase there, almost doubles each of them. So if you look at the, between 23 and 24, we, we didn't double, which is exciting. We did not go that high. So we're, we're anticipating great things in '25, hopefully not having as many go. We're currently sitting right now at 7,725 delinquent properties. Out of 168,000, that's pretty good for right now. Our delinquent statements will be mailed out this week, which will help bring those numbers down and more in line, hopefully for, for the tax liens. Next one is electronic payments. And I know that we've all, we've all used the word COVID over and over and over. COVID did help in this, obviously. You can see the numbers going from 2018 to '24. Obviously, '20 and '21 was the huge increase and that is, we pushed for a long time to get electronic payments to be a thing. And people just were still, still a little hesitant to do that with putting their, their account and credit cards out on the internet. And then they were forced to with COVID. And they realized that it was a success and it was much easier for them to sit at home and do it than come to see us. So we're excited with those numbers being up at 35,000. Out of that 35,000, 32,622 was online. So that was done individually. They went out there and did that themselves. 1,000, about 1,900 of them were done over the telephone. Our current vendor does not have an online process, so we take these over the phone, which is 1,900 calls that we took that got those, those, those payments taken. So really excited with that number of 35,000, want it to continue to increase. It's really nice to just upload a file and input it into the system without having to do it manually. So excited with those. Courtesy delinquent notices to manufactured homes. This isn't, this is a good one here. Obviously, if you look at the numbers where we have dropped significantly, the big part of that is that same legislation where the $28,000 valuation or less is not taxable. So that, that does drop down quite a bit of, of properties in the county that, that would get delinquent at that point. So 150, 58 and 23 to 220 is a great number. We're sitting currently at 429 delinquent manufactured homes. Again, with, with the delinquent statements going out, that should help that too a bit. I would anticipate that we do have a little bit more than the 220 we did last year, but still good numbers if you're looking at what we did in the past, the numbers of 800s and 600s, down to, to half of that at this point is, is pretty exciting. The next slide.
Todd, do you mind if we pause just for a second?
Yes, I'm sorry.
See if anybody has questions on this slide? Go ahead, Commissioner Shannon McMillan.
Good morning. Thanks for being here. Good to see you.
You too.
I'm curious, you mentioned a lot of changes legislatively and kind of process-wise. How has that impacted your staff and the capacity and has it made things? I'm sure in the onboarding, the beginning implementing is always harder, but how is it, has it made your office feeling less stressed or helpful or helping? I mean, I'm just curious because it's brought a lot more online and I'm, I'm wondering how that's impacted you all and our processes and our, the staff in the office.
Yeah, you know, and I think that, you know, it hasn't, it hasn't increased our workload as far as individuals. There has been a ton of legislation, I know we've all seen that, a ton of legislative changes the last two years. That has been the biggest impact on staff is what, what are the changes? What is going to be new? What can we do to help process these? The online advantage, right, with, with parcels increasing, it's nice because we don't, we haven't increased staff in, in years and years because we have that, that electronic means that's happening that, that takes away from that, excuse me. Our staffing has been, has been great. There has been some stressful times when the special session was, was called in order and we had two months to get a treasurer's deed process in place and things like that has been very, very difficult. We have done great. Our staff is great. We, we work a lot with them and let them know that, what's coming so that they're prepared. And I think that that's the biggest part of the whole thing is we are very, very, very much ahead of the game rather than reacting where we see that with, with other counties who are contacting us and saying, what are you guys doing tomorrow? It's like, oh my gosh, probably should have thought about that three months ago. But our staff is, has been very, very good with it.
I appreciate those.
I hope that answers.
Yeah, thanks for those insights. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks, Todd.
Mm-hmm.
Two questions. One is regarding the courtesy delinquent notices that we send out to the folks who own manufactured homes. How effective has that been over time to prevent some of those homes going into a tax lien sale?
Yeah, it's, it has been hu, very, very big. Our 600, so if you look at some of those 600 numbers, now back in the day, I was, I was very involved with the, the manufacturing tax collection. I was out there in the parks and I took great pride in that. And if you look at those 600 numbers, the 800 numbers, we have never taken more than 20 to the tax lien sale after that. When we do 600, it's, it's about 600 of the orange tags. We average about 150 to 120 disremitance warrants. Now, a disremitance warrant done is, is statutorily driven. The orange tag is not. But the $50 fee that comes along with the disremitance warrant, if you're looking at someone's taxes and their $20, and then they have a $10 advertising fee, and then you look at the $50 disremitance fee, all of a sudden their taxes are now $80. That's a, that's a huge increase for somebody that might be struggling. So that's where the orange tag comes into play that you're referring to. So yes, so the 650 we take out there, then that eliminates almost three-quarters of it every time, which is very, very nice, which is funny, very funny when we go out and it's like, you know, we, we hand them the, the delinquent and they're like, thanks, I've been waiting for my delinquent statement. Because they, the titles might not be right, so they are not getting them, the original statements in January and things. So they think we're, we're delivering those. So we, we do some education at that point to see if we can't get those. But they are a huge success. The orange tags definitely get us a lot.
May I ask my second? And my second question, Todd, is, and thank you for sharing that good news, and that is regarding a collection of property taxes. And speaking of changes at the state level in the law, I believe next year will be the first year to collect property taxes in escrow and installments through a vendor. Can you say a little bit about that, please?
I can. We, so there was legislation that was discussed that did, did not pass in regards to monthly installments, 12 monthly installments. And what that would do to systems around the state and what would it cost to improve that did not, did not happen. So now we are working with a, a vendor called Autoagent, who is statewide, that will allow taxpayers to pay into an escrow on a monthly basis. And then they will disperse to us just like a mortgage company would two or three days before the deadline. So the, the, the public can go ahead and just use that, just you can set up automatic payments each month, take $200 out of my account, put it into here, and then they will be able to pay that way without having to do it through, through us or us to change our systems or anything like that. We have a vendor that will be in, in touch with and able to do that. The cost is $1 to the, the taxpayer to initiate the ACH, so it's a very, very small cost. So we're excited for it, yeah, to see how that works next year. It's a great option for, for taxpayers that, that would like to, you know, do the monthly installment that, that we're not capable of yet.
So there's a private sector vendor that's doing that. I, I thought that was, the company was something called escrowtaxes.com, but you mentioned Autoagent.
I, so I'm sorry. So Autoagent is the, the parent business? Escrow, escrow taxes is, is underneath that, that parent company is what that is.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, thank you, Todd. And you know, I just want to compliment your office because you have really worked with people to figure this out. And I think that the compassion that you've shown in your office is, is remarkable, you know, whether it's manufactured homes or not, you know, the, you know, really wanting those tax lien sold numbers to go down, doing that work in person instead of having, you know, outside folks being, you know, outside the community, being able to take advantage of that. And so I think that, I just, I just want to compliment you on the fact that I, that you're really working with people, understanding that this can be a struggle for many folks. And so just thank you for that work. That's, that's really important. You know, this is, this is hard work. It's hard to, you know, for people to hear that they owe a lot of money and they might not have it and what do I do? And so I think that the way that you've worked with people and tried to problem solve and even with this situation on being able to pay the property tax, you know, monthly to find a vendor that was very inexpensive to be able to help people who need that option as well, I just really want to give you all kudos for all that work.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Yes, we definitely make it a priority in the office to make sure that, that we're helping as much as we can.
And we do appreciate that. So I think we'll move on and then you're going to be talking about the trustee end, right?
Yes. So we'll move on to the public trustee. So what you'll see there is, for the public trustee is release of deeds of trust, which the number has significantly dropped since you see there in 2020 and 2021. I know, I hate to keep using COVID, I want to be done with that, but, but you'll see there the 2021, when interest rates were significantly lower than they are now, refinancing was through the roof. And those are the release of deed of trust that you see there. So the, the numbers that are now not as high, we anticipate could eventually jump if, like everyone else watching the feds, to see what happens to the interest rates. When is that going to drop? Is it going to drop? We hear, you know, every, you know, you hear July, you hear September, you hear maybe December, you hear seven times next year. So we're just kind of keeping an eye on it each month when the feds meet to see what we can anticipate on release of deed of trust. So like I said, we're still thinking that we'll go up with, with the next drop in rates, but we're not exactly sure. But that's a huge, huge decline since 20 and, and 21. The public trustee foreclosures. Foreclosures, you can obviously see from the graph that if you take away the COVID years, we're kind of still in line. Things have not increased. Things have not gotten worse, which is very exciting on our end. When we absorbed the public trustee years ago, there was the fear that, that things were going to skyrocket. We were going to have thousands and thousands of foreclosures and we were going to need staff. We still haven't seen that. We still anticipate some, but not, not as much as you would think. So it's 204 new opened foreclosures last year was, was really, was really good. It dropped down nine, which isn't a whole huge drop, but a drop is good. There were 170 foreclosures that were withdrawn. Now that includes the attorneys calling and saying that, you know, they will withdraw their foreclosure if the homeowner comes in and cures and brings it current, or if they work directly with their lender on a new payment plan or whatever they're doing with theirs. That's what those are. So to have 204, 74, or 170 withdrawn is excellent numbers. And the, the greatest number of all down there at the bottom is there are only 10 properties last year that were sold to a third party for, for foreclosure. So that's really, really exciting. Some of those, right off the top of my head, were vacant lots up in the burn scarred areas and things like that. So not, not necessarily homes, which is an exciting part. But yeah, so great, great numbers there, staying steady with years prior to COVID.
Any questions? No? Yeah, that is, those are good numbers. Thank you for sharing that.
Mm-hmm.
There again, we, something we don't want to see.
Yes, absolutely.
Nobody, nobody wants that.
Right.
So good news. All right, I think we're done with.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd. Thank you.
Have a good rest of the day.
Good to see you.
And we'll finish up with the assessor.
Great.
Good morning.
Last but not least. Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. I'm the Larimer County Assessor presenting today. I just want to thank, working with Julie and her office, I think moving
It's the light red.
It's green, okay.
Yeah, it's sometimes hard to see.
All right, thank you. So yeah, I want to thank Julie because we're, we're reimagining how we can present our data because we, we just have a lot of activity in our office day in and day out. And I, I think we have a great story. But following what we have been talking about in the past in terms of our performance metrics is if you look at the upper left, the inbound calls to our office, in 2024, we had 11,000. And you can see that's, you know, we get somewhere between 11,000 and 12,000 in, in any given year. But 2023 was a unique year, given the increased valuation of 40%, so we had over 15,000 calls. And just to highlight, what we don't have here is walk-ins. Now, we're tracking walk-ins, people who come into the office and get service. So in 2024, 5,100 people walked into this building and asked for service from the assessor's office, and so we were able to provide them service. Another data point that isn't up there that we hope to highlight in the future is 302,000 folks had visited our website in 2024. And, and so we're constantly updating our website, giving legislative changes, giving property data changes. And also another thing we do is with, when you look at everything total, we serviced over 350,000 inquiries in 2024. If you look at the website, if you look at the call-in, if you look at the walk-in, and if you also include the property transfers, which is the box below the inbound calls, we had 17,000 transfers in 2024. If you move to the middle, you will see that on the top box, how are we servicing our, the parcels, given the appraisers we have in the office? So we, we have about 19 appraisers that are servicing all the parcels in our office and the ratio is 19 and it's 9,000 to, to the 170,000 parcels that we have here. So that's what that ratio is. Now, we did add in some limited-term employees just recently, and so that's really down to 8,000 parcels per appraiser versus the 9,000. We are audited every year. One of the key components that we are looked at is the coefficient of dispersion. For 2024, it was at 6.4%. Were required by the state to be below 15.99%. That is a, a very But as you can see, as it cycles, we're right between 7 and 6% in terms of our coefficient of dispersion. Some, some other data points I, I think is worth highlighting that, that isn't here is the, the legislative changes that we constantly are getting from the state. And we're going to get a split assessment rate coming up here. So you're going to get one for the school, which is 7.05%, and we don't know what the, the local government share is going to be. But assure you that my staff has to work with our CAMIS system, which is our office modeling system or computer system, that they're trying to implement all these changes. And as you know, things were coming out swiftly last year in the legislative session, and we were able to meet those deadlines. Another thing we did in 2024 is that we reduced our office space. With our scanning project that we had, we've scanned tens of thousands of documents in our office. We're, we're literally almost a paperless office. And so we were able to return about 10,000 square feet of office space to the county, which is roughly about $1 million in downtown prime commercial property, if you think about it in those terms. So we shrunk our spaces in terms of our workspace with our staff, but at the same time, we were able to return this office space to the county. Another data point that I, I like to highlight is we, we did offer a, a new service for the community, is a bulk data center. So if you go to our, our website, you can now download dozens of different data that the assessor's office has. What was happening was we would get calls, people would want custom reports, it would take our staff maybe an hour, two hours, three hours, maybe a day to create these custom reports. If anybody calls our office and it takes more than an hour to create a custom report, we start to charge them. So now if somebody has got the wherewithal to collect our data, download it and manipulate it, they can do it for free 24/7 a day. Another thing I should notify you about is that, I can't say it enough, is our notice of determinations will go out this year on August 15th. The, the state changed it last year. So typically, people will get their notice of determination this week, and now it's moved to August 15th. I know I'm talking a little bit about 2025, but I have to repeat it often because folks continue to contact our office because they're so used to getting their notice of determination now. We've got enough advertising on it, but it's, it's still the way of the world. Those are sort of the, the highlights about what we have here. And then the, the appeals that you see there are the protests. We're, we're not just looking at what the protest number is, but we're looking at terms of percentage to our population in terms of our notice of value. So you'll see that in 2019, 15% of the population appealed. Of course, we had more growth in the county going into '21, and then we only had 7% of the population appeal with the major changes in property values and increase in, in prices. More people appealed in 2023. But I'll just share this with you, that we're roughly around 7% in 2025 in terms of how many people appealed, so. But I, I hope to bring you guys some more data and telling more of our story as I've highlighted in some of my conversation with you.
Well, thank you, county assessor. Any questions? Any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, county assessor. I'm curious, since you've had a lot of transition over the last few years, you're changing processes and kind of modeling and how staff are trained in different models, and it's kind of been a big shift. And at the same time, we've had, you know, the pandemic and majors disasters with fires, and you guys have to shift your, kind of your focus and get out and cover these properties and help with that, right, when it's happening. How do you feel about the, you mentioned about shrinking your space and going paperless. How do you feel about the state of your office and the processes and staff and, and catching up? Because it's kind of, you know, you have assessment years, you had a lot of folks in 20, was it 2024? And I'm just, or 20, when was that, the, when we had the big spike? I, I'm just curious about how you're feeling about where your office is at trying to adjust to these ever, along with all the legislative, all these changing conditions, and a lot of those are out of our control as a county.
Well, I'm, I'm, thanks for the question because I couldn't be more excited about my staff. I mean, they are just knocking it out of the park. I mean, they are hungry to take on the challenges that, that are in front of us and to provide outstanding customer service, you know, to the public. Since you mentioned the modeling, I'm getting a little ahead of myself from 2025, but I do have with you our model report, which is the first that Larimer County has ever produced from the assessor's office. Sorry, don't mean to throw them at you. But this is best practices is what, what an assessor's office can do, is that we're showing our work and we're continuing to look at opportunities to show our work. And so while this model report is only for residential, we don't necessarily have it for commercial or other properties. But for the, about 120,000 parcels that we have here, this is the, the breakdown of the detail of our modeling and some conversation as to, in terms of the tax, as to the, the challenges that we met to, to come up with these values here for the 2021, 2025 reappraisals. Now, my office is, we're on call 24/7 a day in case there's a wildfire or a flood. We were, we were prompt to respond to the Alexander fire. We put in over 50 hours of time. That means that we, we caught the data, we went out into the field, we did the site inspections. And then after the site inspections that were done, when folks were notified by the sheriff's office, according to our agreement, about the homes that were lost, we did attend the three-day event that Larimer County hosted with the EOC so people can start to rebuilding their lives. And the assessor's office was there to explain to them our process because if somebody loses a home due to a natural disaster, that home's burned down, they shouldn't have to pay property taxes the day that home is gone. And so we remove it from the tax roll. There's also, at the time, a property tax credit they were entitled to. We wanted to make sure that they were aware of that. And also that when they do the rebuilding process, that it's usually a five-year time period the state gives you to rebuild until they decided after five years, if you're not going to rebuild, maybe you're just not interested in rebuilding. And so we adjust those values roughly 50% through every major disaster that hit a particular neighborhood. And so when you see a burn scar in those charts that come from the state, usually those properties are adjusted within that burn scar. That is what we use for our data collection because we, we don't have our own data set. So we use the, the fed's data to figure out where that burn scar is. So a person could be across the street outside that burn scar, looking into a desolated area that had a major disaster, but that person would not be adjusted. It's only within that data set. So we have to work with data and, and verify it. And so that's what we use.
Thank you. Any other questions for your county assessor?
I don't have questions. I just appreciate this documented. It's technical, but it looks very interesting.
It's, it's very technical, it's statistical, but we do have a glossary in the back to, to help folks. And I just really have to congratulate our modeling team. We have a two-member modeling team. And, and thanks to the commissioners for, for supporting this, to create a, a modeling section in the office that, you know, this is their, their second attempt at doing modeling for this office. And so they're always looking at the data, they're, they're researching it nonstop, and so we can be a higher performing office forever and ever.
Will, will this document be made available to the public online at some point?
It, it was made available on May 1st, and it's on our forms and report page. And we did put it in our press release to let folks know. I, I did hear people talk about it. They said it was technical, but they did appreciate having the opportunity to read it. And, you know, when I had to read my first model report, I'll be honest, I had to read it a second time, so take it in.
Thank you.
Well, I think the work is technical, right? I mean, it's, it, you know, it, it would be hard to sort of simplify it. You want it to be detailed enough so that you're getting the correct valuations. And so, so yeah, so read it, read it a second time if you need to, but thank you for your transparency in that space. I appreciate that. So one of my questions is, with the number of properties per appraiser, is there, is that, is there a number you want to be at? Do you feel comfortable with that number? What, what is, how do you feel about that ratio and how does that compare?
Well, I think between 8,000 and 9,000 is, is probably where we need to be. But again, we hired three limited term employees that are going to be with us for this one to two-year project to do all this enhanced data collection. Because what happened is, again, I'm the third elected, third elected office here to talk about COVID. We did fall behind with COVID. We did fall behind with the wildfires and natural disasters. And then with our increased appeals in 2023, our office was focused on that. So now we, we've added some more staff, and so they're reviewing permits all the time. We're reviewing new construction all the time, and so we're updating our records. And so I, I, I hope to bring to you, next time we report, what that total number and value is. Because we're, we're able now to do what we call catch-up work at significant pace.
Well, thank you. And we're, we're almost out of time, so I just want to thank you and your staff. I, you know, I think that the, the protest period and some of those times can be really difficult, and I will say that, you know, watching your staff interact and often in the hallway, they are calm and measured, and they do give great customer service, and they are able to diffuse difficult situations. And there again, you know, I think people want their properties to go higher, but, you know, and everybody wants their property to be worth more, but nobody wants it, you know, often people don't, or struggle with paying the taxes if that happens. And so I think that what can sometimes be a difficult situation is handled extremely well by you and your staff. And so I just wanted to say, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you very much. And I, I do have to give credit to Lisa Timmy behind me, our director of administration. She works very, very hard to make sure that every senior, every veteran gets excellent customer service, which is about plus 20,000 here in the county.
Well, thank you, Lisa. Remarkable work. Thank you. It, it, it always feels smooth in what could be a, maybe not such a smooth situation, so wonderful work. All right. Well, thank you, Julie. Thanks for all your work. Thank you for working with these other elected officials as well, in addition to the other work you do. And this is really great information for people to have. People don't always get a window into what some of the other elected offices are doing, so I think this is a great opportunity to do that. And we look forward to, you know, future years and different metrics, maybe not for you necessarily, but certainly maybe others will be working on different metrics. But this was great information.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Have a good day.
With that, it's 11, and we're adjourned.